Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. The agenda for this meeting can be downloaded at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, Chair Daniel Kater.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to call to order this September 15th, 2022 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Kater.
Here.
Vice Chair Bashertash.
Here.
Commissioner Biddle.
Here.
Commissioner Coleman.
Here.
Commissioner Lomas.
Here.
Commissioner Neal.
Here.
And Commissioner Wade.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for attending tonight's Planning Commission Meeting. This commission provides an opportunity for public participation in the development process throughout the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission considers a wide variety of projects, including subdivision maps, zone changes, general plan amendments, and much more. When applications are received, the City Planning Division analyzes their request. Planning staff will present the facts about the project along with their recommendation to the Planning Commission, who will approve an item or make a recommendation as appropriate. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 3A, Public Statements.
Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission regarding items listed on tonight's agenda? Please note, if you are here for Item 6A, this is not the time to speak. You will be given an opportunity to speak on that item when it is called later in the Seeing no speakers during public comments, does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda? If so, please come forward and state your name. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 4, Consent Calendar Items.
All matters listed under Consent Items do not require a public hearing and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of said items unless the staff or commissioner request specific items be discussed and/or removed for separate action. May I get a motion to adopt approving the consent items?
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Bashertash, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Neal, commissioners, please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Motion passes with Commissioner Wade absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 5, Consent Public Hearings.
Now is the time for consent public hearing items. If the item is not removed by commissioner, staff, or member of the public, the commission will vote on all items in one motion without further comment. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the non-consent public hearing items. At this time, I will open all of the consent public hearing items. Does any member of the public wish to remove a consent public hearing item? Seeing no members of the public, does any commissioner or staff wish to remove a consent calendar public hearing item?
I would like to recuse myself from Item 5F.
Thank you, Commissioner Bashertash. Please note, Item 5F, any other commissioner or staff wish to remove a consent public hearing item? Seeing none, at this time, the consent public hearing items not removed are now closed. May I get a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on the consent public hearing items not removed incorporating all staff memorandum and revised staff recommendations?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Biddle. Commissioners, please cast your votes.
Motion passes with Commissioner Wade absent and Commissioner Bashertash abstaining from Item 5F.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 6, Non-Consent Public Hearings.
Now is the time for non-consent public hearing items. Before we begin, I'd like to explain how each hearing will be conducted. Staff will first provide a report, then those in favor of the project will be allowed to speak. Those in opposition to the project will be able to speak after all of those in favor have spoken. Each side will be given five minutes to provide rebuttal comments. Individual speakers may ask questions during their statements, but the questions will not be answered until the public hearing on that item is closed. Written comments may be given to the clerk, who will provide copies to the commission. Please be respectful of others participating in the hearing by not repeating the remarks of previous speakers and presenting any new comments or thoughts in a concise and clear way. Mr. Johnson, would you please provide us your staff report?
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners, members in the audience. This is Item 6A, which is a zone change in a planned development review. This project is located at the northeast corner of Old Farm Road and Noriega Road. Currently, it's vacant land. The existing zoning for the site is exclusive planned unit development, and the request is to go to a combining zone with the R2 or limited multifamily zone, and this would allow development to be approved by your commission as opposed to coming through your commission for a recommendation and ultimately going to city council. The general plan designation is LMR, which is low-medium density residential, which allows four to 10 dwelling units per net acre. As proposed, this 20-acre site has approximately 18 net acres, and with 134 dwelling units, it will come to 7.5 dwelling units an acre, which is consistent with the general plan designation. This will be a gated community. Interior roads are private. Access one point off of Old Farm Road. Again, 134 dwelling units in a duplex-type design with a shared drive between the duplexes. There will be a leasing office, a fitness center, swimming pool, and spa. There'll be four lots within this development. Lot 1 in the northwest quadrant contains 17 buildings, the leasing office and amenities that I just mentioned. Lot 2 will contain 16 buildings. Lot 3, 17 buildings along with a maintenance garage and an expansion of the existing sump. And then in the southwest corner, you'll have Lot 4, which consists of 17 buildings. Two different elevation designs, so 67 buildings total, of which there will be 134 dwelling units, and these are all two-to-three-bedroom units, ranging in size from just over 1,000 square feet to over 1,100 square feet. There are four deviations to the development standards that the applicant is requesting, and that is a request that can't be made with the PUD zoning. And the first is to reduce the landscape area along Noriega Road and Old Farm Road. The current requirement is 15 feet. They want to reduce that to 12 feet. That is consistent with the underlying map that was approved for this site, and it's also consistent with the Trails Plan. So there's a condition, number 22 of the map, that does allow the 12 feet. So staff concurs with the 12 feet. They also want to reduce the landscape area between the building and the drive, those little, I'll call them landscape islands that you can see kind of jetting out that are circled in red. The requirement is eight feet. They're requesting to go down to four feet nine inches. Again, staff believes with a more dense product that there's going to be some deviations, and staff believes this is an adequate request. They're also requesting to reduce the front yard setback on the knuckles. This would be on the four knuckles that you see. 15 feet's required to the building. They're requesting 10 feet. This has been reviewed by traffic and fire department, and there's no objection on that. And the last deviation they're requesting is on the rear yards, on the interior lots. The requirement is 25 feet, but that may be reduced to five feet if not more than 50% of the lot is covered by buildings. They are requesting to go down to five feet. What was not provided was, again, with those four lots, was the building coverage. So it's questionable if 50% or more of that lot is covered by buildings, so it may be less, which would allow the five feet. So regardless, staff is supportive of the five feet because it doesn't go anything less than what would be required anyway. Would note that the applicant did public outreach on their own last month, and there was several individuals that showed up. The applicant is in the audience and can speak to that. Staff was not present. We did post this, or the applicant did post the site. We did send out notification as required, and received no comments in response. Staff believes that the project meets the conditions and therefore recommends approval as identified in the staff report. I complete staff's presentation and available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Seeing no speakers wishing to speak in favor of the project, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the project? If so, please step to the microphone and proceed.
I just want to make sure I'm in the right place.
Yeah. Planning Commission, Item 6A, the zone change in planned development review at 5200 Old Farm Road.
Yep.
May we have your name?
Linda Ward.
Thank you.
I had no problem when they first had the regular-sized putt, but then when I got the paperwork and everything, and they showed exactly how many houses was going to be in that area, it was a lot. And I think it would be just to congest it for the school there and just the community in general. Because, I mean, I'm all for having the community build up and everything, but it's just, that was just too much for the area. And it's, you know, and I looked that they had two openings. One was near the school, and the other one was on Noriega, no, Old Farm. And the other one was on Noriega. So the way it looked to me, it was, you know, the one opening is just right by the school, you know, and there's a lot of traffic with the school, people dropping off their kids every morning in the first place. And then with all the influx of the new people moving in, it's just going to be a lot and dangerous, I think. That's what I think about it.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay.
Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
My name is Dineshada. I'm the next door from the, there's a project going on. I think these investors should respect the city because they already denied a couple of times for this project, and I don't know why they keep back and forth bringing this, you know, project after two years, three years. There's too much congested over there in Polo Park and everything, and we don't want this project over there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the project? If so, please come to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Seeing no additional speakers in opposition, does any commissioner have any questions for the public on this item? Remember, this is not the time to express any opinions on the matter. Only ask questions. Mr. Johnson, just to clarify, this is a time for questions for members of the audience, the applicant, and the city?
As long as your position's not being made, yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right. So I'm looking at this, and it says there's 134 duplex developments with, I think it said, one to two bedrooms, three bedrooms, or was it two to three? I'm wondering how many children you, the applicant, believes will be generated, how many students will be generated from this development, if there's a projection on how many children might live here.
Would the applicant be okay coming?
Yes, my name's Tom D. Members of the commission, pleasure to speak to you tonight. We have several projects in the city, okay? One of them is around the corner, and it's called The Retreat, okay, at River Lakes. And our student generation varies in those locations. It's been as low as eight and it's been as high as 17. That particular project has 132 units on it. This is a little bit higher, so we're projecting probably a little more student generation. It's between two major schools. You know, the project's going to be doing vast improvements to the streets out there, so the traffic and infrastructure is going to be a huge improvement, and we will be paying our share of the school fees to Norris and to high school. The total's probably over $800,000. So that's, without a report, that's what I can say. Does that answer your question?
Only slightly. I'm just wondering like a number range that you're projecting for.
It would probably be around 17 to 20 at a high point. I mean, that's what we're looking at, at other existing communities right now.
Out of this 134 units, you're expecting maybe 17 to 20 students?
We have 17, we have 17, we have 10 to 17 coming out of 134 units. I would estimate, or guess, if you want to call it that, 17 to 20. But again, we're paying all of our fees. School Department has been notified. We're very involved with NOAR, so, yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Neal. Next, Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair Kater. This first question is for staff. Does this project help us with arena numbers at all?
Yes, it would.
And what is the intent, how is this intended to be held? Is this going to be, is this going to be individually owned, or what's the plan for these units?
That would be a question for the applicant, but I do note, again, these are four lots, so they're not individual lots right now. So there would, at maximum, I suppose it would be four owners, but I will let the applicant respond if they eventually plan to subdivide even further.
Thank you again, Tom D. Yeah, everything we build, we keep, so our intent is to build it, keep it as one property for a local family. So it's going to be designed, built, one LLC, and we're going to keep it.
So you intend of these are going to be rental units?
These will be leased, yes.
Okay.
I wanted to ask staff about the concessions on the landscape because it looks like you make concessions on all of it. And so I'm a little concerned about the front setback on, was that Noriega? I'm sorry, I don't have the map up here. Yeah, I'm sorry, on Old Farm. Well, and Old Farm, too, I guess, and Noriega. Can you explain to me again what your thoughts are on the setback reduction?
The 12 feet is consistent with the Trails Plan for the area, and in 2017, when the map was approved by the Planning Commission, they accepted the 12 feet, which at that time was above the standard, which was 10 feet at that time. It was not until 2018 when that was increased to 15 feet. So in essence, they're complying with the underlying map that was approved by your commission in 2017.
Will it be CCNRs or some, what, some way to, well, I guess you don't need CCNRs if you have one owner, but I'm just a little concerned about how this is maintained.
That would be maintained by the property owner.
And no, there are no bonds or anything to make sure they do?
There is not, other than with this approval here, with the planned development review approval, you're approving also the landscape plan, so therefore, if they don't comply with the landscape plan, this is something that can be brought back to your commission.
There's no requirement for them to maintain it once it's approved, once it's built?
There would be a requirement to maintain, yes.
I have no further questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Commissioner Lomas.
Just a couple of questions. Staff could probably answer this. Currently, is the roads at Old Farm and Noriega built out with curb and gutter? The map's showing not.
No, it's not. They will be widening it and building it to standard.
Okay, thank you. And also, the other question would be, and that's that back along Noriega, you're saying taking it from 15 to 12, does that come off of the trail or coming off of the landscape? Because I'm seeing in the map, you've got a trail, and then it looks probably like a three-foot landscape strip.
Well, the Trails Plan requires 12 feet, and that's what they're providing is 12 feet. That would be on their private property outside the road right of way. And so if you were to require 15 feet, what that would mean is they would have to bump the wall and move and shift everything. If you did it on Noriega, shift everything north another three feet. So they're providing, they're providing consistent with what's even on further down on Noriega, further east, and again, consistent with the trail plan at 12 feet.
I understood that, but here's the part I'm still confused. So if you're looking at the, I'm making that assumption that up is north. So if you look at the, on Noriega, and you look at the eastern, where's, how's that tie-in going to look to the existing trail and landscape?
It will be, let me see, if I have an aerial that shows that. Other than, zooming in, you can kind of see right there, which would be south of the sump on the east side of the project site, it will tie in, it'll tie in consistent with that.
That's the section I'm looking at. Is that 15 feet or 12 feet?
12.
Oh, okay. Well, there you go. That makes total sense. I'm thinking you're going from 15 to 12. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lomas. Commissioner Neal.
I'm curious to know what the, what the speed limit is going to be on these inner streets here on Tea Party, Hancock, Windexter, and Tolentino?
They're residential streets, or they're private streets, so I think maximum 25 or whatever.
Okay.
They will be.
25, okay. Does the commission have a way to reduce the speed on this street?
Since it's a planned unit development, you can require a lower speed limit signs be posted.
I'm asking the question because this is 134 leased units with two to three bedrooms, two to three bedrooms, applicant, in each unit, and it seems to me that your projection of 17 to 20 students in this unit, I mean, in this whole development is, you know, drastically low. And maybe if not now, maybe down the road, you will see more children in here. I'm concerned about the setbacks and the adjustments that have been made to take away landscaping. I don't see any, any big areas of green pastures where children can play. And where you've taken back landscaping around this kind of loop of street frontage, that's the only area where I see green, like enough green space for children, children to play. So I'm concerned that kids will end up playing out here where the street is, but the speed limit might be a little too fast for, for that purposes. And I don't know, I'm sure that it's been reviewed for traffic and for safety, but I'm just not, I'm not understanding where kids will play in here. And maybe you're not expecting children, but it's not like an age-restricted development or across the street? Okay. Yeah. So I'm just concerned about children playing in the biggest plots where there's green spaces being right along that inner loop where everyone has to drive past to get to their, to their unit, so.
Oh, that's not, but yes, sorry, that's, so the, Commissioner Neal, you're still asking questions, right? Oh, okay, perfect. I just had a quick clarification on the PUD zone versus the proposed, or the request to go to an R2 PUD, combining zone. Looking through, when I was kind of trying to recollect myself on the exhibits, is there a stated density in a PUD zone?
It would go with the, with the R2 zone, the base zone. Yes.
Okay. But, so when, something is, because its current zoning is just a, there is no combining R2 overlay?
There's not. Typically, dense, I'm sorry.
So the applicant is requesting the combining with R2. So currently, as just a stated PUD zone, is there a density cap on it, or is it?
And that would default to the general plan designation of the LMR.
LMR, okay.
That's correct.
And can you remind me what the LMR designation is for the allowed density of a project?
Four to 10 dwelling units or acre.
Okay.
Net acre. So at 18 acres, they actually could have up to 180 dwelling units.
Okay.
They're proposing 134. I would also note to answer Commissioner Neal's comment that they will have to comply with the zoning ordinance, which states in part that each multifamily development shall provide and maintain a minimum of 20% of the gross area of the site is open space. This shall include 200 square feet of contiguous landscape space per lot, not less than 20 feet in width or depth at any point. So that is a requirement they have to comply with.
Thank you. And then my second question is just, is there, is there any connection being proposed? There's a current local street that is connecting to the site to the east. Is it Challenger? Yeah, and I was just curious, off of Challenger, there's a kind of an L, a T intersection. There is a drive aisle that aligns with, with that? Is there any proposed connection to that, or is that just a, like, is it a secondary fire, is it a secondary fire access point, or?
Oh, you're talking on the east side?
Yes.
No, there is no connection.
Okay, so there's one way in, one way out?
That is correct.
Okay. And just to confirm, then, the PUD zone would allow up to 180 units, is what the base zone?
Actually, the general plan designation of LMR would allow up to 180. I would also note that in 2017, the city council approved the site for 176, so they're still even below that on this request.
Okay, thank you. This has been a great time of Commissioner questions. Are there any other questions before we move into the rebuttal period?
I got one.
Commissioner Lomas.
I know standards have changed from back in the day, and I think- and I think it has to do with sprinklers being mandatory on buildings now. But what, in a, at a project this size, in years past, the secondary access would have been required? What is, what triggers a secondary access now? How many units?
200 for the fire department.
Thank you.
Any other Commissioner questions? Okay, seeing none, we are now moving into a period of rebuttal, which provides those in favor and those in opposition a five-minute total time to address comments heard during the, the public hearing portion, the beginning of the public hearing. Please note, this is a five-minute total time for all speakers, so please make your comments succinct and provide everyone in the audience an opportunity to give their thoughts. So, we will begin with those in favor of the project. So is there anyone who wishes to provide rebuttals on this item? If so, step to the podium, provide your name, and proceed. And Madam Clerk, please start the time at the first speaker.
Again, Tom D. Again, thank you for, for your time. I guess to try and answer one question real quick, there's substantial road improvements that will be going around this property. I mean, the trail system is gonna get a connection there, so the equestrian trail out on Noriega is gonna be connected by this project. The bike trail, which is a sidewalk that's about 10 or 12 feet wide that goes along Old Farm, that will be connected to the north and to the south. And that leads right down to a 40 or 50-acre park north of River Park. So, the connectivity there, I think, is key. I live in the area, and I'm super stoked to see this go in. I can't, I can't wait for the road improvements to be completed, so that it does relieve some of the congestion out there. I also mentioned that each of the units have a little backyard. We have doggy doors that go out to the backyard, and so there is little areas for not a lot of big-time play, but there is little areas for private space and, and personal use, as well as a full pool, spa, all those kinds of things within the amenities. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Blaine Neptune. I'm with McIntosh &amp; Associates, and I'll address a couple of comments. Commissioner Neal, you made a comment about the reduced setbacks. I just wanted to be clear that the only reduced front yard setbacks are at the knuckles for a couple of units. Along the perimeter streets, the local interior streets, we are meeting all front yard setbacks. Matter of fact, the city has a staggered setback to kind of change the elevation. So, we will meet the front yard setbacks on the interior streets, except for a couple small at the four corners, just because knuckles make it kind of difficult. The other thing I wanted to touch on is that on the exterior streets, there's been talk about the 12-foot landscape. Keep in mind, that's in addition, that's in addition to the 11-foot width that you have from the curb and gutter to the right of way. So in a cinch, from the curb and gutter to the wall, you will have, you know, 20, 20 feet or so. So, that's important to note, because a lot of times, when you talk about the landscape width, you're talking about from the right of way, and from the flow line to the right of way, you have an additional 11 feet, so. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers wishing to provide rebuttal comments in support of the project? Seeing no additional speakers in favor of the project, we will close the support portion of the rebuttal period and move to rebuttal period for those in opposition. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition? Madam Clerk, if you could also reset the clock, thank you. Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Okay, my name is Linda Ward, and they say that approximately 17 children will be in this new complex. I would estimate it at being more of at least 150. That's, that's one child per household. This is, you know, what they're proposing. Depending on the price of the house and everything, there are a lot of families that are trying to get new homes and what have you. So, that count is way low. And right now, the schools in that area are very crowded already. And it's just the way it's, the situation, what, now they're saying, I understood it was being two ways in, in and out. There's only one way in and out. I think that's kind of dangerous. If there were to be a big fire or anything, because those houses are so close together, just one house would set everything on fire over there. And I live in the adjacent homestead, and that's just, it's just, it's just dangerous all the way around with that many, many houses in one area. It's just all crammed together. It just needs to be less. I mean, there's like 20 acres there with an acre. If you even wanted to go split that into two, two half acres, you know, that's, that would be like 40 houses in there. But they've got cramming in 187 or 80-something houses in there. That's just, that's just too many people, too many houses. And, you know, you can't estimate how many people, when they buy their house, how many kids they're gonna have in their house, you know? So, I think it's still gonna be just too congested. The highway there, with the children going to school back and forth, right now, there's no stoplight there, which might help a lot. But, still, it's just a lot of children. There's two schools right there, Patriot and Freedom School. And there's a lot of children already going to school in that, in that area every morning. My granddaughter, for one. And it's just, and they're walking. It's just gonna be a lot more traffic, too much traffic. All right.
Thank you. Are there any additional speakers wishing to provide rebuttal comments in opposition? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Seeing no additional speakers in rebuttal, at this time, I will now close the public hearing on this item and return it to the commission for comment and action. Commissioners? Commissioner Neal?
I guess I didn't get to ask if on that loop, there will be speed bumps or parking of any nature.
So, we can still ask questions, is that?
From the staff?
Just, yes.
You can ask the applicant questions.
Applicant questions, yes.
Yeah, my question is, Mr. Tom D., will there be any sort of, that's a very long stretch of street on both sides, and I'm just wondering if there's something in the plan to slow traffic. I know that it's gonna be 25 miles an hour. Are there dips? Even in regular residential neighborhoods, we see dips, or we see humps. And will there be parking on that street? My concern still remains with the children. I know that there are backyard spaces, but if you go to any neighborhood, the kids like to play together. So they like to play out in the open spaces. And so I'm anticipating, looking at, and by the way, now I can tell you that I think this is a beautiful development. And I, I have some favor for it. My only concern are the children.
Tom D., it's kind of a hard, hard question to answer. We do have a full-time management company that will be onsite. If there's someone that's, you know, speeding at all, all the time, you know, they'll get notified. The, the speed limit in there is, it's a private drive, it's gonna be 25. I mean, certainly not opposed to having a condition that posts that as a speed limit. Areas where we can't park, we usually will paint them red for the fire department. If we have to put speed bumps down there because it's out of control, I mean, it's not something that, you know, that would be out of our realm. We could do it pretty much easily, because it is a private street. So, we share your same concern, and, and, you know, I don't have a complete answer unless we were to, you know, to put a condition on there that says, we'll limit the speed limit, put up speed limit signs or something like that. But our management company does a good job. We've got a project right now that we're building almost identical loop to this. It's over off of Panama Lane, behind Winko over there. A well-received project, very nice, and the public loves it. I don't see a, a real problem with speeders, except for my construction guys. But, other than that, you know, this is private, and we will try to maintain that, and.
How wide is the, how wide is the street?
I believe curb to curb is 36.
40.
40, okay, so it's actually wider, as wide as a public street, so. And there would be parking at both sides of that width.
Okay, okay. And is the developer amenable to putting speed bumps or something of that nature in if, if the commission was leaning towards approval?
I don't, we don't have a problem with it, it's just, it's, I mean, I would defer, I mean, I don't know if I could.
Okay, I'm gonna defer to, so, Blaine Neptune, again.
So it's something that you might want to confer with emergency services, because fire and ambulance are not in favor of speed bumps at all, so.
I was just getting ready to ask staff what we could brainstorm in terms of slowing the speed down.
Yeah.
And that, I know you don't intend for people to speed down that stretch or intend for children to play, but that's, that's what will happen, so.
People are speeding in, in, in shopping centers and everywhere anymore, so it's, it's a valid concern. But, but we, you know, you gotta look at emergency services and what they want, because they want to be able to get to a house when they need to, so.
Mr. Johnson, is there a way that the plan can be amended to ensure that there's not speeding going on down that street? Or, you understand where I'm coming from, kids like to play together. They're gonna be on their bikes, they'll probably be going in loops around that circle. That's what kids do in neighborhoods, and that's a really long stretch of street.
Mr. Neptune is correct. Speaking for the fire department, they, they don't like speed bumps. Instead, they prefer speed humps, which are more, because of the weight of their vehicles and everything, to prevent damage. It's more of, I could be mistaken, and I can get it from the fire reps in the audience, they're more like five feet wide and kind of, kind of shallow. It would be enough to slow it down, but it would not be sufficient, sufficient enough that would damage vehicles.
The, the purpose would be definitely to slow traffic, not to damage the residents' vehicles. So, if that means a speed hump, then, you know, that sounds like an option.
And if you'd like, we can have a condition added where we can work with the fire department and the applicant to install sufficient number of speed calming devices.
Just have to see if the rest of the commission has similar opinion. But I think that would be fantastic, and it looks like a wonderful project. And I'm, I'm excited to see this kind of development come into our city, so.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, for the member of the audience, our, the public comment period has closed. So this is the time for the commissioners to confer and make action, so. Mr. Johnson, there's no way to address the public at this time if they have a question, right?
You can call on them if you'd like.
Okay, yeah, Ms. Ward, yes.
I guess I was speed reading more than I thought, but my understanding was that these were gonna be PUDs, these were gonna be single-family homes to be purchased, not to be rented for these, like, to be, you know, just big, big apartment building, and.
I think, yeah, I think it was, the applicant clarified, as it's four parcels, the, the current plan is to be managed and leased as leasing, leasing housing, so rental apartments.
Right, so it's basically renting, I mean, rental homes.
Yep.
So, there again, that's gonna be a lot of different traffic in and out, you know, because these are not gonna be people that are gonna be.
I'm sorry, this is kind of, this is more of a public comment portion period. So if you have a question that we can answer, I'm happy to answer it, but I want to be respectful of the process and other members of the audience, so. I appreciate your comments, though. Sorry, this portion is moving on. So with that, are there other, Commissioner Coleman, I believe you are next on the request to speak.
Thank you, Chair Keter. I share Ms. Neal's, Commissioner Neal's concerns about the kids in this project and some of her issues, I want to get to that. But I want to first say that I'm usually loathe to, you know, cut lots, because we really do need more housing, but this looks really dense to me. And I do have a couple of concerns regarding the green space here, that there isn't any place in this project for people to gather and to, you know, for the kids to play. If I think about when I was a kid, you know, we'd go find a little park to throw ball or whatever, a place for a basketball court or something. So I'm a little concerned about that. I'm also a little concerned about the, this, this 40-foot wide street here, and then parking on both sides of it. I can imagine what this place is gonna look like on a Sunday evening. And I don't think it's gonna be very slyly, and so I, I'm a little concerned about that. And I'm also looking at this note on here, and I know we talked about what the setback was, and Mr. Epstein tried to clarify, I'm sorry, tried to clarify what the setback was, but the plan I'm looking at shows a 12-foot setback on Noriega and a 10-foot setback on Old Farm. And so I, I'm a little confused.
Is that a question to the?
Well, I was asking, Mr. Johnson, can you clarify that for me? Am I looking at this wrong?
May the applicant come forward and just clarify, Mr. Commissioner Coleman's request for clarification. Thank you.
Blaine Neptune again. So yeah, the 12-foot setback, so if you look on Noriega, there is a 45-foot right of way, and the flow line is 34 feet. So the flow line is where the curb and gutter is. From the back of the curb and gutter to the right of way, you have 11 feet. In addition to that, you have an additional 12 feet. So you're seeing the 12-foot landscape strip, and it's not a setback, it's a landscape strip. Okay, so essentially, on a normal collector in town, you have, from the back of a walk, you have eight feet to a wall. In this situation, you're gonna have 23 feet instead of, you know, typically, which would be 13 feet. So you got an additional 10 feet on both Noriega and Old Farm than you would have in a city, typical city standard collector. With regard to the setbacks, again, the setbacks are, for the front of the house are measured from the interior loop, the street, not the, the collectors and the exterior loop. And I'll mention one more thing, that I don't know if it was, if we had a detail of it, but there is a rec facility, not just a leasing office, but a pool and an area for the whole community to gather, and pedestrian pass to get there. It's right off the entrance from Noriega, a very, basically the size of two lots. And it'll be a great place for the community to gather right there.
Off of Noriega?
So if you zoom in, Paul, I don't know if you have a.
Old Farm.
I'm sorry, off of Old Farm, I'm sorry, the entrance off of Old Farm.
So this little clubhouse thingy that you have here is gonna have some other facilities?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a pool and a spa, gym, gazebo, places for the everyone to gather.
Thank you for clarifying Commissioner Coleman's questions. Commissioner Coleman, do you have any additional comments? Commissioner Coleman?
I'm, I'm thinking, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's all right.
Yeah.
I couldn't read your non-verbal cues. I apologize.
Because I'm usually so verbal.
Yes, yeah.
What's the, Director Johnson, you said earlier that this project that does help with our arena numbers. Which category of arena numbers does it help us with?
It just helps us get to the, it doesn't help with our really lower mod income, but it helps us get to the, to the numbers that we need.
And so that was the other question, is this gonna be, this is gonna be a market rate? There's no provision for any lower moderate income housing? There's no provision for any lower moderate income housing? Okay, I have no further questions at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Are there any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Biddle?
I think densification is scary for any neighborhood, especially one that has mostly single-family dwellings. In this side of town, it has limited options. We've seen quite a few apartment complexes come in, but I'm a person that's lived in a duplex for the last nine years. My neighbor's sixty-five years old, and she's lived in her duplex for the last twenty-six years. So to assume any certain type of resident is going to be here isn't quite there, but to be able to provide this type of housing options is nice. So I think this type of densification is what we need to see all over town, so I think it'll be welcomed by the neighborhood.
Thank you, Commissioner Biddle. Are there any other Commissioner comments?
No, I'll wrap it up.
No, you're not wrapping it, I'm wrapping it.
I guess my question is just for staff, Mr. Johnson, regarding, I mean, I'm the newest Commissioner, so I don't know what the process is for adding the speed humps, but I'd like to propose to the Commission that we, I'm in support of its approval with the addition of speed humps.
May I make, Mr. Johnson, may I answer that? Yeah. I think, Commissioner Neal, if we provide the other Commissioners a chance to talk, finish their statements, and then I will welcome your motion to approve the project with the condition of the speed bump, yep. So I think if Commissioners have comments, if we can continue that, and then I will, we will reserve the first motion for Commissioner Neal. Does that mean Commissioner Loomis? I see.
Couple things. I'd like to address Ms. Ward and your concerns, and to make sure that you know that we've, you have been heard, okay? Couple things. The first one I'd like to address is, we've been looking at this piece of property, hang on. It was first annexed in nineteen ninety-two, and it first came to this, it would have come to this Commission in two thousand and five, and I was here in two thousand and three. And then it came back in, again, in two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and twenty, and here we are again. And what I'd like you to, a couple of things I'd like to explain, one is, in January of two thousand and seventeen, this, this piece of property had a hundred and seventy-six-unit project approved, and they could have built that at that time. So now we're considering a hundred and thirty-four, which is sizably less. Your concern for traffic is, is always a problem, because you add people, of course you're going to add traffic. But I think with the major road improvements, that we're not able, the city doesn't have magic pots of money, so we're not able to put in those road improvements. So that's where the developers come in. So that's where, that's actually the nice part of development, is it does clean up some of the, the more problematic areas in town where traffic is really a problem, and it's difficult to control when, when the streets aren't built out. So that, that's another component. Another one I wanted to mention is, as you had heard me, I asked some questions about that secondary access, when you have that many units. It is important to get people out safely. Your concerns about fire, though, is not as you would expect, in that the state of California has mandated that all new construction have fire sprinklers. So to find an inferno in a neighborhood like this, it's just not going to happen, because all the units will have fire sprinklers. And that's why they're not requiring a secondary access, because you're not going to have that kind of, of problem in a, in a neighborhood that we see in an older neighborhood. So a lot of these things have been addressed, and be assured that our city staff and our ordinances are there to protect the new residents and you as well. So I wanted to assure you of that. And on another note, we are, as everyone knows, we need housing. We do. We need all types of housing, and this is offering family units with garages. So the, if you're worried about your neighbors, well, they're going to, it's not, it is a at-market product, so they're going to have to be spending quite a bit of rent, probably. I would, I would speculate the, the rent will be up there. So I think it's going to be a good neighbor for you, and I know it's scary, but I hope you're a little bit more assured that we are watching out, and staff has done, do their due diligence to make sure that things are done in a safe manner, and hopefully make an amenity for your neighborhood. So I'll support the project.
Thank you, Commissioner Loomis. Are there any other Commissioner comments before I make my comments? Seeing none, I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you so much for public participation. The Planning Commission exists so that we, as a community, can have a dialogue about the future of our city, about how we grow, questions can be asked, and so every member of the public that showed up tonight, I just want to extend a thank you. We, this Commission exists for the community, and your comments are very appreciated. I enjoyed having the opportunity to hear about this project, because it addresses a couple of things that I think, to me, speak to a very positive step in the how we grow as a city. One, I think as other Commissioners know, as we've seen projects in the Northwest, this, to me, if we look at an aerial of the neighborhood, is so endemic of the suburban infill lots that you see throughout the Northwest, that take public investments like the Polo Ground Community Park, the elementary school, and give, make them so close for residents, but so far away, because we create dangerous two-lane roads that have no navigational, like, it's not safe to, I, this is one of my famous intersections of, I'm a cyclist and like to ride my bike, and I will avoid this intersection at all costs, because it's a city, but it's also a country road, and those two usually don't end in a very safe environment for kids, for pedestrians, for bikes, people walking in the morning. And so to see that connectivity is exciting. I also think, I, I'm a resident of a small lot, and I think the, I appreciate denser communities being located next to public outdoor amenities, because I think when I want to take my daughters on a swing or a slide, I can't do that at my backyard, I have to walk to the neighborhood park, and it becomes a part of my daily life. And I think giving residents an option to be more engaged and make Polo Community Park not just their soccer practice on Saturday morning, but their everyday park, I think enhances this community. And lastly, I think, to Commissioner Biddle's point, I, I think this neighborhood, if you look at this aerial, sorely lacks, sorely lacks diversity in housing options. I mean, there is maybe a thousand square feet of lot size that distinguishes every residential unit in this aerial photo currently. And so I think, being a, being a city that is inclusive, that provides diverse housing options, not everybody moves to a new community, is ready to buy a house and put a pool in, you know, I think that they're, as a community, providing spaces for people to lease, for people to, whether it's for twenty-nine years, whether it's for six months, and I think, so for me, I'm in support of this project, I appreciate this Commission for, for thoughtful suggestions like traffic calming and the way we can work together as a community. And so with that, those are my comments, and I will turn it over to Commissioner Neal to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, thank you for that, to approve the, the application with one condition, and I wanted to ask Mr. Johnson for a suggestion, or the fire, in terms of how many speed humps need to go in here, every how many feet, you know, with more specific, I don't want to just say speed humps, and then there's just two. So I don't know what the recommendation would be for, for, for this, to accomplish what, what we're interested in accomplishing.
To accommodate your request, Commissioner Neal, be my recommendation that condition B, as in Bravo twenty, be added that states, prior to issuance of a grading permit, revised development plans shall be submitted to show traffic calming devices as approved by the City of Bakersfield. That way, the fire department, public works, and planning can all make sure that the devices are sufficient.
On that loop, inner loop, yes.
Yes, on the interior streets.
That is my motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Neal. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Biddle. Commissioners, please cast your votes. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
If I may...
Yes?
Read the appeal period.
Oh, yes, please do. Thank you.
So decisions of the Commission are subject to appeal by any person that believes they are adversely affected. The appeal must be filed in writing within ten days from the date of the Commission's decision. The appeal must be addressed to City Council and include the appellant's interest in or relationship to the project, identify the decision appealed, and address facts and reasons why the Commission's decision should not be upheld. So that means that the applicant could appeal to the City Council, adding the condition, or members of the public could appeal your, again, this is a recommendation, you're going to go to City Council, so if they appeal it, then it would be heard at City Council.
Thank you for that clarification. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item seven, communications.
Does staff have any communications?
We will have a meeting on October fifth. I will be sending out a link to an environmental impact report that will be considered at that meeting. You may want to familiarize yourself with that. October sixth.
October sixth.
Thank you, Commissioner Neal.
I know.
October sixth, yes, stand corrected.
October sixth.
October sixth.
Okay, and look forward to that report. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item eight, Commission comments.
Does any Commissioner have any comments? Commissioner Neal?
I just want to thank staff for answering all my questions, and the applicant who's now gone, for entertaining my questions, and thank the Commission for supporting, you know, that interest in keeping things a little slower on there for the kids.
Thank you, Commissioner Neal. Any other Commissioner comments? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned at six thirty-three. Have a great evening.